I just admitted Devon, so we have all of the candidates that are on the list you have.
Everyone will start in just a second. Okay. Welcome, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Candidate Forum on Racial Justice. My name is Corey Allen. I am the co-leader of Fighting for Black Lives in Our Neighborhood. This forum is co-hosted by Fighting for Black Lives in Our Neighborhood, Friends of Melrose Metco, and the Melrose Racial Justice Community Coalition. We are also hosting a racial justice forum for school committee candidates at this time next week. These anti-racism groups hosted racial justice forums for city council and school committee candidates in 2023 and for school committee candidates in 2021. I would like to thank these city councillor candidates for being with us tonight. I would also like to thank the candidates for their willingness to serve as leaders of the city. Let's move to question one. And we will call up the slides so everyone can see question one. And the first question is about policy change. And here is the order in which the candidates will respond. The order was randomly generated and will be reversed for the second question. And there'll be a transition. Each candidate will be in the spotlight of Zoom, so they'll be on the screen during the answer. And then at the end of three minutes, you know, we will say that is time and we will then call on the next candidate, they'll be in spotlight. So there'll be, you know, there'll be some transition with each one. So the first question, policy change. In past forums, candidates have cited implicit bias training as a way to reduce systemic racism in city institutions. While training is valuable for addressing interpersonal racism, it does little to address institutional racism, racism that arises from formal and informal policies, procedures, and practices. Please name two specific policies, procedures, or practices that you would champion to address institutional racism. And given the documented history of plans that fail to translate into action, please outline the accountability framework that would support your two policies. As shown in the order, we will now put the spotlight on Maya John-Ludin, and she will have three minutes.
Thank you, Corey, and thank you, everyone, for organizing. Thank you for that question. As I mentioned in the previous forum, two years ago, we can pat ourselves on the shoulder for completing implicit bias training and call it progress. Training is valuable, but it doesn't dismantle institutional racism. It only addresses the interpersonal level. If we're serious about equity, we must look deeper at the system and structures that determine who has access, opportunity, and voice. Two specific areas I would champion are equitable hiring and promotion practices. I believe we must review our city hiring, promotion, and contracting processes through an equity lens. That means ensuring fairness and transparency at every stage, expanding outreach to underrepresented communities, reviewing job descriptions for inclusive language, and tracking demographic data to identify patterns of exclusion or advancement gaps. That said, I also want to acknowledge that recent changes in civil rights law interpretation mean that municipalities must be very careful in how we approach equity work legally. The goal is not to give preference based on race or ethnicity, but to identify and address barriers that limit fair access for anyone. We can and should strengthen practices that ensure equal opportunity for all while staying within legal boundaries. The second is budgeting through an equity lens. Budgets are moral documents that reflect our priorities and values. I would advocate for each department to assess how their spending impacts different communities, including residents of color, low-income residents, and other marginalized groups, and to engage the public before finalizing budgets. This approach isn't about exclusion, it's about inclusion, transparency, and understanding the real impact of our decision. As someone who has consistently advocated for social and racial justice in Melrose, I review every order and decision that comes before the council through an equity lens. But I also want to be transparent, this work often faces resistance. Some people, even fellow elected officials, have told me directly that they are sick and tired of racial justice conversations. That precisely why I believe accountability cannot rest on one or two people. Real progress requires collective responsibility. I invite our residents to not only ask what elected officials can do, but also to reflect on how each of us can use our own influence to create a more equitable city. When we speak up together, when we hold one another accountable, that's when meaningful change happens. We are only a few weeks away from the election, and the truth is, this moment matters. If we want leaders who will keep racial equity and fairness at the center of the decision-making, we must show up, vote, and stay engaged beyond election day. I'm asking our residents not only to support candidates who are willing to have these hard conversations, but also to be part of them. Reach out to your neighbors, attend public meetings, and don't let this dialogue end tonight because real change doesn't come from one person. It comes from all of us refusing to do this work alone.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, we will now put the spotlight on Dionysus Tuskarellis. And I will say once, I can give you the go once we've zoomed you into the spotlight.
Perfect.
Okay, you're in the spotlight.
Thank you. So first of all, I'd like to thank you for your work. It's much needed and appreciated. Coming from Jamaica Plain, a diverse community that is very important to me and my family, I have to admit that I'm saddened to see the disparities that exist here. So with my background in finance and real estate, I wanted to focus on housing, specifically homeownership and home loans, both referenced in your report. A big topic in Melrose is the housing shortage. While more thoughtful development can help to increase housing opportunities, it won't address racial disparities in homeownership. And that's because the issue isn't just access to housing, it's access to financing. Now, access to financing is unfortunately well-known for its institutional racism and one of the hardest to address, given the federal regulations and the internal practices of private lenders. While the Mortgage Disclosure Act data that was referenced also in your report doesn't include the reasons for denials, we can push for greater transparency at the city level. So my first recommendation would be to consider policy that requires lenders that work directly with the city. So I'm talking about those who are financing our city-supported developments or serving as city depositories to share that anonymized loan data, including denial reasons. This could guide future policy and also set an example for other cities to follow, and we can expand. My second recommendation would be to consider the creation of a housing fund that can support with down payments, refinancing, and home improvement. It could be run in partnership with community development financial institutions whose mission is to support fair housing and affordable housing with transparent processes. So funding can be achieved through Community Preservation Act funds, public-private partnerships, or donors who are very socially conscious and have an abundance of these types of funds. In addition to the structural recommendations, I'd also support partnering with housing agencies to support with loan review. Applications are sometimes drafted specifically to exclude certain groups, and small errors can lead to rejections. Lastly, regarding accountability, we can look to climate action, a public dashboard with measurable goals. Similar system could track lending data and housing fund outcomes. We could have results reviewed by an advisory board and presented to the council. This concept is very similar to other ideas that I have proposed regarding the city's financial infrastructure that further build on transparency and inclusiveness, and these are the values that I fully support. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will now spotlight Elizabeth Kowal, and I will let you know. Okay, that is great. You're all set.
Okay. I was an employment attorney, and I'm now a human resources executive. So I have spent my entire professional career advocating for justice and equality. I'm also now a member of the Melrose Human Rights Commission. So I'm really glad and honored to be speaking with you all tonight because the issues that you are working on are so very important to me as a person, but also to me as a citizen of Melrose. So my first proposal, or an idea that I would champion, is, while this might seem a little bit obvious or simplistic, I think we need to do an annual audit on all city ordinances, codes, policies, laws, practices, and look for biased incomes, excuse me, biased outcomes. Even if things seem neutral on their face, the outcome of certain policies can be discriminatory and unequal. So for example, if you look at policing practices, zoning laws, school funding formulas, as Maya said, hiring and promotion policies. I've done this type of work before in my professional life, and it's hard, and it's very detailed work, but it's needed and ultimately is enlightening and valuable. So how do you then hold departments accountable? So in my experience, for the cleanest results, the city does need to appoint an independent oversight committee or person to oversee this type of audit and make recommendations. And then once those recommendations are made, the city needs to measure the inclusive behavior and make it part of performance reviews, departmental strategic goals, and even tie funding or accreditation to those departments that demonstrate equity outcomes. So that's the first. The second is, the city really needs to embed equity practices into their long-term municipal planning and budgeting and not just treat it as a one-off. Equity, really, for it to become part of the core of who we are, needs to be treated as a foundational value, like we treat fiscal responsibility or sustainability. It has to apply to all city departments. And again, in terms of accountability, as I already mentioned, the city needs to tie compliance to something that people will pay attention to. That usually is people's bottom line. So the city council can refuse or defer funding perhaps for departments that fail to, for examples, submit equity impact statements or engage with affected communities. When I've done this work in the past, the best results come when you impact the bottom line of a department or group. And I wish it would be different and people would just do this work, but you have to start somewhere so it becomes part of the fabric of who we are. And in my experience, when you at least start to make it around people's budget, you see faster results and people paying attention, and then it just becomes part of the motion.
Thank you very much. We will now spotlight Ryan Williams.
Thanks very much.
Yep, now you're in the spotlight. Yes, please go.
Okay. Thanks. I wanted to reflect for just a second on some of the great ideas that I've heard tonight and remind folks that the Melrose City Council only has the capacity, in so much as the city of Melrose has the capacity to undertake some of these excellent ideas, excuse me. One of the things I've learned over four years of being a city councillor, both a ward city councillor and an at-large city councillor, is that all of our great ideas have to be implementable, and they have to be things that we can continue to follow up on throughout the years. So I wanted to give a few specific examples of actual policies that I've either worked on and products that I've produced with the help of the administration or some things I'm working on currently. So first, in my previous term in 2022, I worked with the mayor's office to secure a small federal earmark to build out a traffic calming toolkit. This is a data platform that the city hosts on its website. This includes a bunch of features you might expect, population density, crash history, pedestrian density, but it also includes demographic and socioeconomic information, like areas with higher populations of very young people or older people, non-white people, and lower-income families. And it combines all of this data into an easy-to-read color-coded format that shows you where in the city we have the overlap of roadway problems with also demographic challenges that we need to be paying a little bit closer attention to. And although the city has been a little strapped for cash lately, and so we haven't been able to make good use of it, it's still something that the Public Works Director and the mayor's office promote and talk about quite frequently. And I'm confident that when we get more money, hopefully with an override passed soon, that they'll be able to put some of those projects into practice. The second thing I wanted to talk about was something that I've been working on recently, which is an ordinance to control the use of surveillance in the city of Melrose. I've been having conversations with the police department about this. This goes back to the issue of making sure that we are creating policies that are enforceable and that people can be held accountable with. And we're not just coming up with ideas that sound good in a forum, but don't actually land when they get to City Hall. This would be a policy that would create more community control and council oversight of surveillance technologies, like the flock cameras that appeared a couple of years ago without our awareness. And it would also create a sort of chain of custody that would protect both the city and residents from the number of people that have access to video data and what they're allowed to use it for. And I know that FBLN is predominantly focused on fighting for black lives. I would be remiss if I didn't sort of mention this very, very difficult moment that we're all in with regard to all immigrant communities and black and brown people across the spectrum, and the need that we have as a city to find real meaningful ways to try to protect them.
Thank you. We will now spotlight Jason Chin. So once you're in the spotlight, I will, okay, you're in the spotlight.
Thanks, Corey. It's good to be here. So the first policy, I think, is to select the right people for leadership positions. And then the second one is to de-emphasize race or ethnicity when we do so. So the best way to curb institutional racism, I think, is to select leaders who are excellent first, and they respect the dignity of all people. And most of all, they know that the solution to hard problems is when we have people who have unconventional backgrounds who can come up with unconventional solutions. And that tends to be a team of people with different backgrounds, and that means racial diversity. So recent success, I think, we've had in Melrose is when we selected Chief Folliars, the police chief. And I was fortunate to be on the citizens' board that interviewed him. And Chief Folliars is excellent, and I find him of the highest character. And he understands his role is to serve all citizens and to respect their dignity. And he lives this, and the people that see him and work with him know it. And I hope the community can get to meet him and feel it for themselves. We don't have black or Hispanic or Asian or Latin American people on our teams because of their race. We have them because they're excellent at their jobs, and they help us solve problems with their unique backgrounds. And implicit bias training has failed us. It's turned people off to diversity and DEI. So as a minority myself that's tried to break into certain clubs or be first, I never mentioned my race or being a person of color or any other unique identity. And I'd find that that grandstanding on identity turns people off, and it makes people question my motivations for that position or even my qualifications. So I'd rather be simply known as rigorous, competent, and reliable. And when I was a submariner in the Navy, I did not spend any time thinking about, am I being a good Asian-Chinese naval officer? Am I representing them well? I was too busy making sure the nuclear reactor didn't melt down or that we didn't run into some mountain underwater. And in return, I asked that, I just, we just want a fair shake, right? I'd rather you, the voters of Melrose, focus on experience and achievements and have confidence that qualified people can help solve our problems regardless of their race. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to Ward Four candidates. We will put the spotlight on Philip Gindy. And once you're in the spotlight, I will, yep, you're in the spotlight.
Okay, so I actually wanted to reference Mr. Williams' comment. These ideas are aspirational until the town puts them into law. So there's two specific policies to address institutional racism. The first one is equity of city departments and schools. I would support a comprehensive equity audit across city departments and the Melrose Public School. This audit would assess hiring practices, resource allocation, disciplinary actions, and access to services, identify disparities based on race, ethnicity, and socioeconomic status. The school is to uncover systemic barriers and recommended corrective action. The other item is inclusive hiring and promotion standards. I would support the adoption of inclusive hiring and promote policies that require diverse candidate pools, standardized evaluation criteria, and anti-bias training for all hiring managers. This ensures that the city employment reflects the adversity of our community and that advancement opportunities are equitable. So the accountability framework to ensure action. So you've got to support public reporting and benchmarking to include all audits, finding, and hiring metrics that would be published annually with clear benchmarks for improvements. This transparency allows residents to track progress and hold leadership accountable. The other item is support oversight committee with community representation. I would support an independent oversight committee, including residents, educators, and civil rights advocates to monitor implementation, review data, and recommend adjustments. This body would report directly to the city council and the public. Monthly public forums. I would personally host open office hours, such as my proposed monthly session, to hear directly from residents and those historically underrepresented in the city in decision-making. This forum would be a spear for feedback, update, and community-driven solutions. The bottom line is Melrose must move beyond symbolic gestures and commit to measurable and forcible change. I will ensure that equity is not just a value, but a practice embedded in how we govern, hire, educate, and serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Spotlight now for Brad Freeman. And once you're in, I'll say you're in the spotlight. You're in the spotlight. Oh. So, yeah, David, can we see if there's a mute? I'm pausing the timer. This is not counting against your time.
Appreciate it, Corey.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you to the Melrose Racial Justice Community Coalition, Fighting for Black Lives in Our Neighborhood in Melrose, and Friends of Melrose Metco for convening tonight's forum. I'm honored to be part of this important discussion alongside so many other candidates for Melrose Public Office. My name is Brad Freeman, and I'm running to represent Ward Four on the Melrose City Council. My wife and I moved to Melrose 15 years ago, and we're grateful to be raising our two children in such a wonderful community. I appreciate your question about policy, especially at a time when sweeping and dangerous changes at the federal level are targeting people of color, immigrants, women, and members of the gay and transgender community. In my professional role, I work with colleges and universities across Massachusetts to advocate for policy changes that improve access, affordability, and student success. Many of these institutions are facing the same challenges, trying to uphold their commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion amid shifting federal priorities. I share this for two reasons. First, I bring a policy lens shaped by real experience navigating gains and setbacks since the summer of 2020. And second, because it's critical to recognize that federal policy decisions directly affect individual rights right here in Melrose. Cities like ours are increasingly caught between conflicting state and federal laws. That's why it's essential we have local leaders with strong values and a clear commitment to protecting our most vulnerable residents. I'm proud to live in Massachusetts, where our governor is fighting to safeguard the rights of every individual in the Commonwealth, and proud to live in Melrose, where our mayor shares that commitment. As we navigate these complex times, the mayor and city council must ensure our local policies align with state law and clearly communicate what protections exist and what risk remains to our employees, students, families, and residents. If elected, I would support a comprehensive review of city policies and procedures to confirm compliance with federal law while maximizing protections under Massachusetts law. We must also keep residents informed of any changes and the potential impacts and solutions that ensure their safety. Second, I would support an open conversation on the city council regarding the potential termination of federal grants awarded to states, cities, and towns and organizations for noncompliance with federal guidance. I have experienced navigating these difficult conversations as colleges and universities continue to lose NIH research funding while maintaining their commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion principles. It is important that these conversations occur with full transparency and opportunities for public participation. Finally, I commit to being present, listening, and learning from your organizations and members, and bringing those perspectives with me to every council discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from Ward Seven candidates in the spotlight, Alex Rodriguez. And you're all set.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, and thank you for allowing me to participate in what I consider to be a vital conversation this evening. It's real honor to be here and discuss how we can bring real change to Melrose and making it a community that works for everybody. I'm a proud Latino, the son of a Mexican immigrant who has experienced racism firsthand since I was a young child with a front row seat to what racism actually looks and feels like. When it happens, everybody suffers. That lived narrative has always driven me in how I approach issues of race. It reminds me that we must build and strengthen systems where every person is seen and valued and validated and included for exactly who they are and the world they bring with them. Training and awareness, although important, when it's isolated unto itself, rarely comes with measures of accountability that turn into real action. I believe we have to be much more active in terms of the actual measures we take to change policies and practices that shape people's everyday lives. In Melrose, I see two areas where we can make real tangible progress, in education and procurement specifically, but also want to second what Dionysio said in regarding the CDFIs and driving greater housing equity. I could not be happier to hear that out of a candidate for office in Melrose. In education, representation matters. I truly believe that every child should see themselves reflected in their teachers and in their curriculum. And I think a diverse teaching workforce would help reduce the racial disparities we see in student discipline in Melrose. I would champion a diversity-focused recruitment and retention initiative to build pipelines for educators from underrepresented backgrounds, including partnerships with local colleges, historically black colleges and universities, Hispanic-serving institutions, and professional development networks such as the He Is Me Institute and the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education. As a relation to procurement, I would advocate for a supply diversity policy similar to that of the federal government and the state-level and the state-level supply diversity program in Massachusetts. This sets measurable goals for awarding contracts for NMSDC-certified minority-owned enterprises. And currently, many of these companies face incredibly high barriers that are often insurmountable in navigating the bidding process or breaking into established networks. I know this because I've worked with several of them over the course of my career. And opening these doors advances equity and strengthens our local economy as well. But like I was saying earlier, policies only matter if they're tracked and enforced. And as people who follow my candidacy for no more than a hot minute probably know that I think talk is pretty cheap when the results don't follow suit, which has been sorely lacking in Melrose. And I would propose a public online equity dashboard that reports annually on hiring, retention, and procurement goals. Residents would be able to see real-time results for themselves. And additionally, I would pair this dashboard with an annual review session where leaders publicly discuss progress, identify obstacles, and adjust strategies as needed. As my own lived experience has taught me, fairness doesn't just happen by accident or by magic. It happens when leaders are intentional, transparent, and willing to do the hard work of change, not just talk about it. That's the commitment I would bring to the council, to make Melrose not just welcoming in words, but equitable in practice with measurable results.
Thank you. We will now spotlight Devin Romano. You're in the spotlight.
All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Devin Romano, and I have the great pleasure, the great honor of representing Ward Seven on the Melrose City Council for the last year and a half. And I'm really appreciative of the breadth and depth of suggestions here tonight, and I do hope that they continue on. In this moment of federal intransigence and outright antagonism, cities- cities are increasingly pressured to tackle big systemic issues like climate change and wealth gaps and institutional racism. And I do a lot of this work in my day job. I work for a national nonprofit called Fuse Core, and our job is to help narrow racial wealth gaps in cities all over the United States. And last year, I rankled a $6 million grant through an organization, Living Cities, to help launch 30 new pilot programs in 15 cities to help build a housing revolving loan fund for a down payment assistance program, help build more affordable housing through a land bank, increase the flow of CDFI capital in Louisville, Kentucky, help to build advanced manufacturing workforce pipelines in Austin. So really trying to look at a bunch of different ways we can narrow wealth gaps in these communities. And that can be a lot easier in cities where you have hundreds of thousands, if not millions, of people living in them. So oftentimes, we are trying to hyper-focus on filling potholes and hiring teachers, and that is alluring and important work, and oftentimes a signal to our constituents that we are, in fact, capable of higher-order responsibility. So I actually see that baseline physical infrastructure work as a necessary predicate to working on all the very real challenges that we're talking about today. So just real quickly, a couple of things that really resonated with me. Number one, since homeownership is one of the biggest drivers of intergenerational wealth, as anyone who's read Color of Law, it's an excellent book, and city government and institutional racism. You know, we can't regulate banks directly, but we can convene, we can educate, we can benchmark. And so I think this would require collaboration with not only the administration, but perhaps the Federal Reserve Bank of Boston, community development organizations, building a regular event that we do education work on pathways to homeownership, on access to capital, on figuring out ways we can work through lending to increase equity in how people can get into the homeownership market. Because as Dion rightly said, really, it's not an access to housing, it's an access to capital, different kind of opportunity. The second was, you know, I do a lot of talent and rehiring and recruiting in every single major metropolitan area in the country, and I see how much procurement matters. Living Cities ran a great city accelerator on this, which gives a whole host of policy recommendations that I think are worthy of our consideration in terms of how we help small businesses build wealth in our community and do that procurement, but then also making sure that our residents see themselves in the people who work here and making sure that we evaluate every part of the hiring process, how we post jobs, how we do background checks. All of that is deeply important. And then lastly, building on my colleague Counselor Jamal Dean's recommendation, we get budget memos in every single department that we evaluate budgets every single year. And I think adding subbullets on what are the racial equity implications or economic equity implications to every single expenditure we make to introduce that regularly into the conversation. So thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to question two. Question two. I'll wait for the slide. Question two relates to conducting an ongoing citywide assessment of racial inequity. And we will see, again, the order of response flips, you know, by at-large Ward Four and Ward Seven. And so, the question. "In July 2020, in response to the murders of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmaud Arbery, Rashad Brooks, and others, Melrose conducted a self-assessment of city procedures and practices to meet the urgent call for equity and justice. Called 'Two Weeks Toward Change,' the study concluded that 'the city has not substantively or consistently invested in racial equity work and that we lack and require measurable ways to track our progress. In 2022, Melrose sought to change this by conducting a survey to collect information about the racial climate in Melrose, but no further assessments have been conducted. Do you support a regular assessment to measure racial inequities in Melrose and track progress toward eliminating them? Would you commit to conducting a pre- and post-assessment of racial inequity and releasing the data within 60 days of collection?" The spotlight will go to Jason Chin, and once you are in, I will start the clock. Okay, you're in the spotlight.
Thanks, Corey. First, institutional racism absolutely exists at different levels in our country. And the statistic that really hit home for me was when Black Americans enter our justice system, they're approximately 7.5 times more likely to be wrongfully convicted of murder than white Americans. And so I appreciate the spirit of the survey, and it is telling us that there are things that are wrong. But in the specific areas, I wouldn't jump to conclusions based on how some of the questions were asked or how the data was presented. For example, the flyer that this group passed out at the Victorian Fair, there's a bullet point that said from 2018 to 2024, Black homebuyers were 134% more likely to be denied a mortgage loan than white applicants. And I need more data. Before we conclude that our regional banks or our lending institutions are institutionally racist, which they might be, a better statistic that I want to see next is, if you look at all the online applications for loans and then determine if for the same assets, income, and credit rating, if Blacks or minorities were denied at a higher rate, that might be a more targeted indicator if there is an institutional racism problem here. And it's interesting, and I get that the questions can be biased, but the banks aren't allowed to ask for race or ethnicity when they're granting or in these online loan applications. And then when we look at the median income level, our Black Melrose residents have a median income that's less than half of our white residents. And the research consistently shows that how rich or poor you are of any race determines how well you perform in school and consequently, how much you earn your lifetime and how likely you are to commit a crime. And race is an added factor. Now, exactly how much, it's hard to isolate. Race and income level are correlated in this country, and Melrose is no different. So these aren't easy questions or answers. There's no silver bullet to this. But I think it'd be irresponsible to take some of these higher-level data points and bang down the doors of our local banks or police station and accuse them of having racism in their policies. So I propose, instead of we have the data we need, let's ask the second and third order questions with these institutions. And then if we find that we have a national problem and it's not necessarily local, then it's the systemic issues, like increasing career opportunities or access to good education for poorer minorities, such that they can get loans and own homes. So to answer the original question, instead of paying for recurring survey, I'd rather go deeper into the pertinent data within the institutions and departments that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now, Ryan Williams, in the spotlight. And once you are in the spotlight.
Thanks very much. So I would absolutely support efforts to measure the city's temperature on racial equity. And any information that results from those surveys, of course, I would support them being released in a timely fashion. I think one of the challenges that we have in not just this city, I mean, this is very common among sort of political, you know, operations where people, they don't like the results, and so they don't release the report. And we should take every opportunity for self-reflection. I, you know, I appreciate the point that was just made, that it may not be the best use of funding. I think that it would be, rather than putting a ton of money into a survey, it would depend on the cost. You know, some survey efforts are very comprehensive and very robust and provide very, very good data. Some surveys are just sort of surface level and maybe aren't worth the paper they're printed on. But one of the powers that we have in the city council as well is to hold public hearings. And these can be open-ended questions that people can come in and discuss their feelings on any topic. We can create them on really anything that we choose. We can also conduct investigations of the city. As I said before, we cannot manage the city or tell the city how to manage its departments, including telling them how to set metrics or goals. But we could certainly listen and put an ear out through a hearing. So, you know, I think that it does make sense for us to evaluate the work that we're doing and ask ourselves whether or not we feel that we're authentically making progress. Also to ask ourselves whether or not we feel we're asking the right question. I've heard a lot of talk about banks and lending and housing. Of course, we have the Melrose Housing Trust Fund. And it is designed, the goal of the trust is to address racial and other disparities within housing in the city of Melrose. And we just can't afford to put the amount of money into it that we would really like to do some of these things that some folks have talked about. And I think there's an override question coming next. But for me, it comes down to, you know, how much money are we talking about? What are the goals that we're looking to meet? Are we going to meet the goals with the effort? And if we get information, whether it's good or bad, or whether it reflects well on the current administration or the current council, we should release it to make sure that residents and counselors and everybody else can have all that information at their fingertips.
Thank you. We will now spotlight Elizabeth Kowal. You are in the spotlight.
Thank you. Similarly, I would absolutely support an assessment to measure racial inequities in Melrose and track our progress towards eliminating them, and certainly would commit to conducting a pre- and post-assessment of what we find out and releasing that data. But I think there's, again, similar to the first question, the bigger issue is, you know, once the assessment is done and the data is released, then what? So collecting this equity data, it isn't enough because, as we all know, the real impact comes from when that data actively informs how policies are written and how budgets are spent. So we need to encourage the city to use that data to drive policy and budget decisions. So even if we can't influence it as a city council member directly, we could certainly be part of the discussion and be driving a discussion outside of the realm of city council and really be leaders in this area. So there's things, again, that the city should do, like use this data, you know, whether it's by race or by income, by neighborhood. And, you know, obviously, look at who's most affected by the inequities, whether it be in housing, whether it be in transit, whether it be in policing or health. And then talk about allocating funds using this data-driven formula that prioritizes the area with the highest inequities. So let the inequities determine where the investments are needed most. And then, once you have identified all this, keep using the data to define specific measurable outcomes that policies and budgets will work towards equality. So are you going to attempt to reduce the racial gap in homeownership by 10% over five years? Are you going to increase minority-owned business participation in city contracts by 25%? So these types of things, and the budgets and the programs, should be evaluated annually against the targets that set. And again, as I mentioned in my previous answer, the city, again, whether it's the council or not, but something that I feel very passionately about is that equity goals, if the city is going to take them seriously, have to be put into the performance management system so that every department can be accountable for measurable products. And if data shows inequities that persist or worsen, departments should have to submit a corrective equity action plan. And we should be using the data to maybe reallocate funds if needed. Again, I've done this work in the past with clients, both private and municipal. It takes effort, it takes buy-in. You know, we all could have great ideas on this forum, but we need the buy-in, both. It has to flow up and flow down. But it will work if there's a plan in place and there's follow-up and follow-through. And I, for one, would really like to see this happen in Melrose.
Thank you very much. We will now spotlight Dionysus Cuskas. Yes, you're in the spotlight. Oh, wait, hold on. I think you're muted. Hold, yeah, let's, I'm not running the clock. Let's just make sure, let's get you unmuted and then. David, is that?
I've clicked Ask to Unmute. I'm not sure what's happening.
There may be a dialogue box on your end. Yep, yeah, I think you're.
Oh, there we go.
Great.
Perfect. Thank you. So you can hear me now? Perfect. Okay, excellent. So just a quick word about, you know, ideas that may or may not be implementable. You know, as a first-generation immigrant who became a U.S. citizen just a few weeks ago, I know that hope is what gives us the courage to believe in ideas and to dream. And so sometimes, you know, we may come across as visionary, but that's just because of the process that we go through. So I hope you can bear with me on that. As a city's counselor, job is to connect with people, you know, to listen, to engage, and to represent their views, you know, in city hall. But obviously, you know, that kind of connection isn't the same as a coordinated standardized assessment, right? So while both are essential, assessments allow us to measure, to evaluate, and to hold ourselves accountable, you know, in ways that individual conversations can't. So that's why my answer to the first part of your question is a clear yes. You know, we can't measure racial inequities or much of anything without regular assessments, right? So how else can we know if our decisions are working? Well, you know, that's the difference between leading with data and simply guessing. So, you know, it's also about transparency and inclusion, obviously, which is the basis of trust. And, you know, again, this is why I've been recommending certain ideas that build on existing successes that we've had, you know, because it brings much-needed openness. And, you know, we could definitely use a lot more of that, right, across all the issues that we're working on. And then in terms of tracking the progress, you know, again, I'd like to return to your housing data. You know, thanks to your work, we know that Black residents in Melrose were significantly more likely than white residents to be denied mortgage loans, home improvement loans and refinancing. And that kind of disparity doesn't happen by accident, right? It's when we ask the right questions and commit to tracking the data, like you've done, that we create that chance for actual change, right? And as regards the second question, my answer again is a yes. You know, you can take a temperature check at any point, but to truly understand change over time, you need before and after analysis. And that's kind of the essence of comparative evaluation. So on releasing the data, absolutely, you know, findings should be published. Otherwise, there's no accountability, right? And as for the 60-day window, I mean, here, you know, I don't have that experience to be able to say, yes, it's possible or not. But of course, I support it, you know, provided that there's a capacity to meet that timeline, obviously, because we want to commit to goals that are actually, you know, that we can actually do. That would be, you know, echoing also what other candidates have said. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will now, Maya Jean-Ladine, into the spotlight. You are in the spotlight.
Thank you. Yes, I absolutely support conducting regular racial equity assessment in Melrose. If we truly want to make progress, we have to measure it. Data must guide our policies, budgets, and decisions. It's how we hold ourselves accountable to the values we claim to stand for. The 2022 Weeks Toward Change Initiative was an important start, but one-time assessments are not enough. We need to establish consistent, transparent process for assessing and reporting on equity before and after major policies or decisions are implemented and release those results publicly within a clear timeline. While I support pre- and post-assessments, I also believe accountability must extend beyond city hall. Each of us, residents, leaders, and institutions has a role to play in building the city we want to see. This does not and is not a one issue that we are trying to identify. It's all interconnected, and it is a combination of multi-factors and multi-layered issues, interpersonal, systemic, you can name it. Yes, socioeconomic disparities is known to be impacting minorities and Black people. But how welcoming and comfortable is our communities for Black people that are wealthy? Because I refuse to stay and make the assumption that we don't have wealthy Black people, but how isolated they feel in our community. And I want to name something that isn't often said publicly. Doing racial justice work in Melrose isn't easy. It can be lonely. It often comes with pushback, complaints, and misunderstanding. But I do it because I believe deeply that our city is stronger when we face these conversations head-on rather than avoid them. So I want to invite everyone here tonight and those who will watch this forum later to reflect on what it means when not everyone shows up to these conversations. Who is absent today? What does it say about our collective priorities when discussions about equity are met with silence or absences? When we file resolutions and people are saying we don't have time for these conversations? Or they abstain from supporting condemning ICE? We cannot continue to assume that the public will notice or that progress will happen on its own. As voters, neighbors, and community members, we all have a role in deciding what kind of leadership we support. As voters, neighbors and community members, we all have a role in deciding what kind of leadership we support and what values we elevate. As we approach this election, I ask you to think about what kind of leadership you want to see in Melrose. Who are the people willing to show up, to listen, to stand in discomfort for the sake of justice? Support them, vote for them. Show, vote for them, join them. This work doesn't belong to a few, it belongs to the entire community. Let's not wait another two years to have the same conversation with the same few people feeling alone in the fight. Let's make equity a shared commitment and an ongoing practice, one that reflects who we are and who we aspire to be as a city. My commitment is and will always be to keep racial equity, transparency and justice at the center of my work and that work. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to Ward four candidates and put Brad Freeman in the spotlight. You are in the spotlight.
Well, thank you for this important question. In reviewing the 2022 Melrose Racial Climate Assessment Report, I developed a deeper understanding of the concerns of our communities of color, particularly related to a lack of comfort interacting with local government and our schools, as well as concerns regarding belonging and authenticity. I believe that the policy recommendations that emerged from the 2022 assessment are a good start to addressing these concerns. But it is important that the city continue to listen to its residents and learn from their experiences to help guide additional policy changes. So yes, I support conducting regular assessments to measure inequalities in Melrose and to track our progress over time. We can't make meaningful change without data, and we can't hold ourselves accountable without transparency. If elected, I will advocate for a structured, ongoing process to assess how city policies and services impact residents across different communities. I believe this work should include clear timelines for sharing results with the public so residents understand both where we're making progress and where more work is needed. It is important that this meaningful work be collaborative. The council will need to partner with the mayor's office, city departments and community organizations, including our three co-sponsors tonight, who have done so much to elevate these important conversations in Melrose. As I shared earlier, my commitment to you as a city councillor and as a Melrose resident will be to listen to and learn from our neighbors so that I can be an effective advocate in these conversations. That includes listening to those who are most directly affected by inequities and bringing their experiences and perspectives into council discussions to shape better, fairer policies for everyone in Melrose. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will, in the spotlight for Philip Kindy. You are in the spotlight. Oh, sorry, I will stop. We'll get, I think there's a box that should say, we asked you to unmute you. I think if you look somewhere, you can click and you should.
Yeah, it was locked.
All right, great. Thank you.
So my answer is absolutely. I support a regular data-driven assessment to measure racial inequities in Melrose and track our progress towards eliminating them. Equity must be more than a stated value. It must be a measurable outcome. I would support conducting both pre and post assessments of racial inequity and to releasing data publicly post-collection. Transparency is essential. Residents deserve to see what we stand, where we stand, what's improving and where we're falling short. These assessments should cover areas such as hiring practices, school discipline, housing access, public safety and resource allocation. The data must be disaggregated by race, ethnicity, income and geography to ensure that we're not masking disparities behind averages. To ensure accountability, I would pair these assessments with annual public equity reports tied to clear benchmarks, community oversight panels to review findings and recommend action. Budgetary alignment so departments are incentivized to meet equity goal. Melrose must lead with honesty, courage and commitment to fairness. I, I am ready to help to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to Ward seven candidates. Yes, Devin Ramal, you're in the spotlight.
Thank you so much. And again, thank all my colleagues here for the helpful, helpful feedback. The short answer is yes, I am in favor of of having a regular public racial equity assessment in one form or another. So an unequivocal emphatic yes. We cannot manage what we can't measure. And so that's an important part of public management. And I, in my hundreds and hundreds of conversations with folks this fall, have noticed that there's a distinct thread of distrust in city government of where money is going and I, data is integral into inculcating that sense of trust. And that takes time, it takes energy, it takes money, it takes collaboration. And so I see in my little corner of the world here, what doing a universal budget survey did for providing real-time feedback and opening a conversation. And that was just with money out of my own pocket to gather data from my neighbors. It and doing what many of you may have seen, a just a regular posting of what is happening in after every single budget hearing, posting a short summary video as to what has transpired. I think that building that call, call and response is integral to building trust. I hear it every day. So but like many of my colleagues alluded alluded to, the famous book entitled Lies, Damn Lies and Statistics, doing it well is is harder. So the long answer is I'm all in favor of institutionalizing the assessment of integrating that into the city council's regular evaluations. I totally agree with my colleague, Councilor Williams about having impersonal in-person hearings as a costless, important in-person element of of gathering data, whether it's putting something in tax bills, a survey, you know, and putting information about where they can take a survey that is going to every single household in our city, doing things over digital. I think that doing that regular longitudinal assessment of outcomes across departments is going to be important to our job as you know, being important guards of city dollars and outcomes. So but I think this actually bubbles up to a much larger, not the institutional racism hits every single department and city government, but one of my great passions is data management, data dashboarding, and I do this work with cities all over the United States. And so this is going to take some deep relationships with the administration. It's a not, it's well, several standard deviations outside of city council management, but I think it's important. I'm happy to volunteer to do it. It's helping to build a city dashboard, a real-time report card that lives on our website. We've got a lot of models to choose from. Boston City Score is one. But there's internal key KPIs that the mayor uses to manage, but then also building that sense of trust with the community where on racial equity issues, but across all issue areas, stacking hands on a set of outcomes that we want to track minute by minute, every single day. And a lot of information lives on the city government website. It's not particularly easy to find, even for myself who does this work every single day. So I think focusing on user experience, focusing on, you know, on that real-time data, and I am already gathering a small army of neighbors and residents who are willing to volunteer their time to build this in real time, already getting some legwork done on this, and I am eager to work with community groups to make sure that to co-design those metrics such that it's not just folks in city government evaluating city government, it's it's folks across the community. So thanks so much. And I really, I, my hope is that this will make Melrose a model for small cities to be a data-driven city.
Thank you very much. In the spotlight, Alex Rodriguez.
Thank you. So I totally agree. We have to be conducting regular assessments to measure racial inequities in Melrose and track our progress over time. The report cited marked a significant milestone for our city, but came and, you know, truly believe it came from a place of genuine reflection and a desire for change. Still also made something really clear is we have discussed Melrose has not consistently invested in driving greater equity or developed measurable ways to track progress. This fundamentally cannot be where the story ends. If we're serious about equity, it has to be a continuous process, not a one-time report or occasional report that sits on a shelf. Just as we track our city's finances and infrastructure, we should also monitor whether our systems are fair and inclusive. And yes, I would absolutely commit to to conducting pre and post assessments of racial equity and releasing that that data publicly. Residents deserve better insight into the progress we're making, what's improving, what's not, what actions we're taking in response. And, you know, as I said, from the beginning of this campaign, transparency is about driving greater accountability between elected officials and community and the communities they represent and driving solutions that lead to long-term sustainability. But, you know, as a, as a marketing analyst, I've learned the the hard way that, you know, sometimes data for data's sake is just simply not enough. Its usability needs to be clear when we are determining how we prioritize resources and plan towards a Melrose that is truly inclusive of everyone. The conversations around its usage need to be in a public setting so that we as a community can connect the dots between data collection and actions taken. As I mentioned earlier, this type of information should be publicly available and easily understandable. I'd support an annual equity report that includes this data alongside updates on progress from the previous year. That would allow residents, community organizations and city leaders to see trends over time and hold all of us, myself included, accountable accountable for follow-through. But, you know, as as a Councilor Ramal said, you cannot, you cannot manage what you, what you, what you don't measure. And these regular assessments and and public reports would make Melrose, would would make sure that Melrose isn't just talking about equity, but is actually living it in the way we budget, in the way we hire, in the way we plan, and in the way we serve every resident. At the end of the day, this is about keeping our promise to make Melrose a fair and welcoming city, not just in words, but in measurable, transparent action.
Thank you very much. When we had reached out to the candidates, you know, we'd said, we'll get through two questions and first of all, thank everyone. Fantastic on time. And but again, it's eight o'clock and we'll be respectful of everyone's time. So, you know, if you have other answers you want to share, you know, feel free to say what those questions were, those answers on your, you know, your campaign sites or your social accounts. Just some closing remarks. First of all, again, thank you so much. This was extremely valuable discussion and I appreciate you spending time with us. Please register everyone for the upcoming Racial Justice Candidate Forum next, you know, same time, Thursday, October 16th, 7:00 PM. And then also extremely important is the election. And, you know, it, there's early voting, but the election itself will be on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. Yes, and then we will post this on, it's on YouTube right now. We will also post it on melrowsracialjusticeforums.org. But again, thank you very much. Thank you, everyone for attending and be sure to vote.